All right, it is six o'clock. So I'll go ahead and open. It's Tuesday, June 1st, 6:00 PM sharp, Rutland Board of Selectmen meeting. Call this meeting open. It has dawned on me that because we've been in Zoom, we have not in Zoom conducted the Pledge of Allegiance, which is something we do to open the meeting, so I know it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to go ahead and do that. Keep up the tradition.
The flag. United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. It's been a long time since we've done that in person, so certainly appreciate it. Okay. Start this meeting off, we have, first on the agenda, the approval of minutes, Treasury Warrant and Payroll. So I'll accept the motion to approve Treasury Warrant 21-W24 and Payroll 21-PW24.
I'll make a motion to approve Treasury Warrant 21-W24 and Payroll 21-PW24.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Benoit?
Benoit, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye, excluding any COA wages.
And Resiti, aye. Motion carries unanimous, thank you. At this point, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of meeting minutes from May 17th, 2021.
Whitman makes the motion to approve meeting minutes of May 17th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Benoit?
Whitman, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Nichols?
Excuse me, Nichols, aye.
And Resiti, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, at this point in the meeting, we have public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Mr. Carnacchioli, name and address, please. First off, it is good to see you in person again, it's been a long time.
Good to be in person. Thank you. Louis J. Carnacchioli, 18, Blueberry Lane. I've come to you on what I consider a very serious matter, and so I want to present my position to this board. It is my understanding that at this time, the only group of employees for the town of Rutland for the upcoming year that are not getting any sort of compensation are the eight secretaries. My understanding, it's dependent upon an override. Well, we already had an override in May, I believe, that was shot down, okay? So to put these people's livelihood in the hands of a town meeting, in my public, in my personal opinion, as a former selectman, is not the right thing to do. I understand that the unions got somewhere between two and three percent compensation per year. I think that figures out to about maybe 50 cents an hour for the secretaries. You multiply that times 40 hours, you multiply that times 52 weeks, and it's a shade over $1,000. Then you multiply that times eight, and it comes to a shade over $8,000, between $8,000 and $9,000. In a budget that I believe is in excess of $50 million, am I correct on that figure?
Fifteen.
What is the budget, total budget for this time, this coming year?
I believe it was around, I want to say 14.7, off the top of my head.
14.7?
Something like that.
Okay. 14,000 dollars, 14 million dollars. That I find it very hard to comprehend, that we can't find somewhere in the budget, $8,000 out of a 14, over $14 million budget. I know times are tough. We had some tough times when I was a selectman, but I believe that every year we gave compensation, especially to the core of this town. During the nine years that I was a selectman, the two secretaries that worked for us, they're both still employed by you folks, by the way, Jackie O'Brien was our administrative assistant, and Nancy Macaruso was our secretary. We would have been lost without them. I like to say that I was a selectman and helped run the town, when in fact, they were running the town. And anybody who knows any competent secretary runs any office he or she is in. The DPW, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Library, I don't care where you go, selectmen's office, as I already alluded to. I hope that you people, you, the board, excuse me for saying you people, you board members, can find $8,000 so that we can go to town meeting, and those eight people who are devoted to this community can say, "They got my back." They care about what I do. You can't tell them words, "We love the work you do." Try going to the supermarket, and when the bill comes up and you're shot a few bucks, say, "Well, you know, my employee says that I'm great, and they can't do without me." That's not going to buy them groceries. I think it's very demeaning to these folks that you, we do not offer them some sort of compensation. So I'm here to tell you, I'm here to urge you to include them in this year's budget. Now, I understand it's the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Well, in my nine years, I fought with the Finance Committee all the time. Finance Committee is an advisory group. You are the people that make the final decisions, not the Finance Board. They advise. Sometimes we listen to them and thank them. Sometimes we thank them and didn't listen to them. And we were the ones who fell on the sword. We were the ones that stood up and made the right decision, and in this one, the right decision is to give them some sort of compensation. So I'm going to let you know ahead of time, so there's no surprises on June 5th. If a compensation is not there for them, I'm going to make a motion on the floor to amend that particular part of the budget and add the eight positions for some sort of compensation. And then I will argue amongst the townspeople, and I will hope that the Rutland people that I know will go along with me. Give me some time, but it's not my job, but if I went through your budget, I could find a place where I could come up with eight grand. Some of the things that are in your budget right now, you could delay until the fall meeting, where you know we really spend money. So there's an area, a way of looking for more money, so I'm asking you right now, do the right thing. Tell these eight employees, "We truly believe in you, we truly thank you, and though things are tough, you're going to get compensation along with the fire, along with the police, along with the DPW, and along with other employees in this community. I thank you for your time, I pray that you do the right thing." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carnacchioli. All right. We have, under Old Business, discussion regarding the TA review. Believe we've heard from everyone, obviously, minus Carol. Ron is not here tonight, he's dealing with an emergency situation. So it's up to the board whether they want to have that discussion tonight, or whether we want to push it to the next meeting, which would be the 14th, when Ron is in attendance.
I mean, I think it's only fair that he be in attendance, and it makes no sense to talk about him when he's not here to discuss.
I was going to say, I definitely feel that it should be more of a conversation than a like, you know, hard and fast checkmark review kind of thing, it's a six-month, so.
Yep. Okay, we have in our packets the marijuana RFI, the host agreement for the cultivation facility. That was discussed at the prior meeting. It's my understanding Town Council, thank you, Mr. Carnacchioli. Town Council had reviewed the host agreement. So I believe we would need a motion to move forward.
I don't think there were any significant changes, I mean, I think this was kind of based off our previous host agreements with the specifics to the company, correct?
Correct. This is again based on a template that we used for the retail that was negotiated, that both Town Council and Ron had worked on. It's very similar. I know that, I believe, David was involved in reviewing it on KP's side. And I had received an email today that it had been reviewed, so if the board felt comfortable, we could go ahead and motion to sign that this evening.
I would make a motion that we sign the community host agreement.
Whitman, seconds.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, to the chair.
Yep.
Is this the one where the bylaw would need to be amended?
No.
Because it's manufacturing, or is that another one that's coming?
No, this was, that was, I remember that meeting because you were in that meeting as well, where we had a company come in that was interested in a manufacturing-retail hybrid. This is simply a cultivation facility, which is my understanding that we would need no amendment to the existing bylaw for the cultivation.
I think she's referring to the business versus industrial classification of the property, and I do think it is this.
Oh, it is, okay, that's, okay, I got confused with those different projects.
There was mention, there was mention, Ron mentioned something.
I was going to say, I do have a meeting conversation, and I think Ron had said that it was submitted as cultivation only, and then they wanted to add manufacturing in, but the way it was zoned, it couldn't, he wasn't sure, so he was moving forward, I thought with the cultivation, and that's what this looks to be.
This is going to have to, regardless of that, once this gets started and this project goes to fruition, this company's going to have to go through planning board and zoning regardless. So I fully trust that process to kind of work through those issues. I know that there was also an issue, I think, with the restaurant going over in a similar area too, that needed to be changed, and it didn't seem to hold anything up, so.
I personally don't have a problem with whether it's commercial manufacturing, that type of zoning part of it, I don't see the same difference to me. But yeah, I would hope that the planning would straighten that out and zoning.
Mitch, it's Tamika, if I may.
Yep.
I don't believe it had to do with the zoning. It had to do with the fact that the marijuana bylaw states that only one license can be on one parcel of land. So the applicant was hoping to do cultivation and manufacturing, which would require amending the marijuana bylaw. But for now, they're just sticking with the cultivation.
Okay, so this is strictly for cultivation. And again, either way, that's going to be worked through through plan and zoning, but thank you for clarification, Tamika.
Thanks, Carol, for remembering, I remembered something about it.
Yeah, we've had a lot of these discussions about these different projects, and especially that other one, that's why I thought that's what you had talked about, that come before us, so. But we have a motion and a second for signature. If there's no other questions or comments from the board, I feel comfortable with it going through the process and all of that being taken care of. All right, we'll have a roll call vote. Benoit?
Benoit, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
And Resiti, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, we have a discussion regarding, I want to combine these next two items, 300th anniversary, Friday concerts, and the Fourth of July activities. I did invite the chair from the Fourth of July committee tonight to attend the meeting. Is there anyone that is here on behalf of Fourth of July or 300?
Tina Greenfield.
Hi Tina, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Carrie's here.
Carrie Motta.
Okay, great, so I had talked to Missy a couple weeks ago, and obviously, the entire state was thrown through a little bit of a loop with, originally, we were told that these events could not happen. And then that order was rescinded, and things reopened just a few days ago. That being said, I know that there were issues surrounding funding, as well as we had to make decisions about vendors well prior to the decision we made to postpone the events. So there are some logistical issues. I think the conversation that we wanted to have tonight, similar in line with what we had with the 300th committee two weeks ago, was perhaps if the committee wanted to do some scaled-down events or something, being able to support those events and help publicize those any way we can. And I just wanted to have some folks from the Fourth here to discuss if that's something that the Fourth of July committee is working on, if they want to pursue. If so, we can certainly move forward with those.
So far, we do have a mini agenda scheduled.
I'm sorry, you cut out there, Carrie, for a minute.
I'm sorry, we do have a schedule of events that's not completely confirmed, but we do plan on having a bonfire hosted by the Girl Scouts on Friday, July 2nd. Saturday, we are planning on still having the Anne Marie Gordon Junior Olympics, as well as the volleyball tournament, bike and doll carriage parade, lip sync, and the chicken barbecue. And then on Sunday, the Fourth, we will have a house decorating contest like we did last year.
Okay, great. Perfect. All right, so that being said, if there's any logistical help or help you need from the Town Administrator's Office or the board, please keep us informed, and we want to be able to be as proactive as we can in both getting the word out, as well as supporting the two committees in any way possible to make these events successful, given the hardships of the last year and a half.
Yeah, we're really excited that we were able to pull some of this together, and we're hoping it's all going to be confirmed this weekend, so we'll have a schedule that we'll probably share with you, and also start getting out on social media.
Excellent, I guess just please keep us informed and let us know what you need.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you guys have been doing on it, I know it's been a lot of back and forth and everything, so, thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda.
Just through the chair, I did speak to Jeff Stillings about the 300, and he apologized he wouldn't be here tonight, but he just wanted to relay that he does have bands set up, probably about four concerts, probably going to cost a couple hundred dollars per band. He's figuring about a hundred dollars for the porta-potties, and he is, the Milk Room has agreed to do the Beer Garden at cost, and all additional proceeds will go to the 300. And then he just had to work out with the police chief as far as details, so he just wanted to relay that information.
And using the seed money that they have to fund, to kind of reinvest to get that stuff going, so it's not any town funds that are going to.
Yeah, to get the ball rolling.
Yeah. Correct.
I know that they had raised some money at the police fundraiser, and so they do have that seed funding, and that's good to see.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, next on the agenda, we have police and fire department transfers. The first on the agenda is the police department transfer. Let me just see here. All right, so the transfer that you have in front of you here, first is a $10,000 transfer from police wages account to police supplies account. And the reason being noted, it's an over expenditure in the expense account that needs to be covered. And I guess my question, I see Chief Monaco is in his office. And the question I would have is, the over expense that you've used to purchase equipment, taking money out of wages, is that going to impact any hours, any overtime, any ability to staff with personnel in a regular way?
No, I don't think, we're still, we're still on track to have full staffing to the end of the fiscal year. Full staffing meaning minimum staffing, I mean, there's a lot of people taking time off in June anyways, so the only thing we're going to get is minimum staffing. And the over expenditure you see there, that's simply something just got charged to the wrong count. We accidentally charged something to supplies instead of purchased services and ending up with the overage. So we're going to clear that, and the other reason is, you know, as you're aware, I'm looking at close to a $40,000 cut next fiscal year, so I'm going to use this money that's transferred over to take care of some expenses such as tires, ammunition, other things that I know I'm going to need to purchase in FY22 that with budget cuts, I'm going to have difficulty doing, so I'd rather do it now.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I'll make a motion that we transfer $10,000 from account 001-210-5120-000, police wages, to the account number 001-210-5400, police supplies, to cover the over expenditure and provide for next year's shortfall.
Second.
Any further comments from the board? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Benoit?
Benoit, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
And Resiti, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have, I believe, two transfers from the Fire Department, and Seth is also on the call.
I think there's another police one, yeah, there's a second police one.
Yes, yeah.
Sorry about that. Okay. Next is $6,000 transfer that's being requested from overtime wages to police supplies. Chief, whenever I see overtime wages on a transfer, can you just clarify, I want to make sure that we're not, this comes up quite a bit for over budgeting overtime? Or is this just, again, similar to the first transfer where it is just balancing out the account?
Yeah, it's definitely not over budgeted. Some of the things you've got to consider are the fact that, you know, each officer gets 11 paid holidays, they have the option to either take the holiday pay or bank the time off. And, you know, you end up seeing a lot of them bank the time off, but you need to have that money budgeted just in case. And as far as overtime goes, we have seven part-time officers, so a part-time officer picks up a shift, we end up not paying out overtime for it. And the other part of it is just emergencies, there's always money in there because of emergencies, and, you know, thank God we haven't had anything that's, you know, required a massive expenditure of overtime this year. And there was one more thing. Yeah, that's basically the gist of it.
Any questions from the board? So this is being transferred, again, to purchase supplies which will be used next year and help offset some of those cuts? Chief?
Yes. Oh, yeah, that was directed towards me, sorry. Yeah, same thing as the other transfer.
So I, through the chair, I do, so these will all be purchased and stored by July 1st?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions from the board? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to transfer $6,000 from account number 001-210-5122-000, police overtime wages, to account number 001-210-5400, police supplies to cover anticipated shorts next fiscal year.
Second.
And I just wanted to comment that FinCom has signed off approval on both of these transfers already, just for our own kind of.
Repetitive.
Repetitive, yeah.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote, there's no further discussion. Benoit?
Benoit, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
And Resiti, aye. Motion carries unanimous, thank you, chief.
Do we happen to have these, Mitch, are we signing these tonight?
I believe we, yes, we do, they're in the folder I have right here, so I can circulate that when we're done.
We can just hang out after too and do all of our security checks.
Yeah, I'm not going to multiple tasking or I pass these around now, then I'll send them to the wrong place and we'll all get screwed up, so.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to check. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a transfer from the Rutland Fire Department. We have is a transfer from ambulance wages to ambulance additional equipment to cover the cost of equipment used during the pandemic that was not able to be replaced by FEMA or CARES Act funding in the amount of $10,000. We have Seth on the line. Seth, what, I have a question. I guess, what are we purchasing that's pandemic-related that wasn't able to be reimbursed through FEMA or CARES Act funding?
So Mitch, just so you're aware, during transport of patients, certain medical supplies and medications that are used, because it's in the, they consider it should have been a budgeted item, and is a disposable item, is not directly reimbursable.
That doesn't seem like a fair deal for us.
Well, it's, you know, it basically comes down to, we transport a patient with difficulty breathing, we do not have the capacity in the short time that we have them to, or the means to test them to prove that they are COVID-related. We won't find that out for 10 to 14 days from the hospital if they even reach out to us and let us know that there was a positive COVID case.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? Seth, I think you had just indicated to me that FinCom had signed off on this?
Yes, it was approved unanimous 10 minutes ago.
Yeah, so that's where you were at six. It was kind of sneaky, you said you had another meeting, I thought it was something on a topic.
I was actually, I was actually out staffing.
All right. Okay, so any further questions from the board?
Just a quick question to the chair, so this is going to bring us through the end of the fiscal year, so this is what has been used, or you anticipate will be used, that we'll cover through?
I've basically been stealing from other accounts to cover these costs, and we just basically want to make sure that we recover what we use this year, but we also will be able to buy ahead and be prepared, you know, if we need to continue down that road in next fiscal year. This line item was cut 50% next year.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it would bring us through, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could through you?
Go ahead, Ron. Is there any way to turn the volume up a little bit for these folks?
I can hear it.
Well, when then?
You said these folks.
I'm getting old, you know, I'd like to be able to hear a little bit better.
Dave, just an apology, we had an extensive discussion about using money for the buyout part for vacation, but we didn't have a lot of discussion on this that I remember. I knew we had enough money because of some other issues within the department where we had some savings in the wage line item, but I was chatting with one of the selectmen tonight, and he was asking me, you know, on top of that money, we have this additional $10,000 ambulance money, and just like it was requested of the police chief, could you tell me why we have the extra $10,000 in the wage account?
In the letter that I wrote to the board regarding the holiday buyout, I put a brief description of where that excess money is coming from. During the year, each full-time firefighter receives 144 hours of holiday pay. And currently now, that amounts to about a $40,000 budget line item that are in the wage account. Due to my staff, about 50% of my staff are less than five years of service for the town, so they only have two to their payment. And some of them are in their first year and did not receive any vacation in the first year. So instead of taking the holiday as pay, they took it as time off. And in future years, I would see that being paid out in future years. It's just in the first couple of years of employment, due to limited vacation time, people are taking the time off to spend with their families a lot.
And thank you, chief, I just had a chance to talk to you, so I wanted to understand that. One of the selectmen that asked me that question, I wanted to be able to give him a reasonable response, but thank you for your reply.
Any further questions from the board? If none, I'll entertain a motion if the board feels it was appropriate.
I'll make a motion that we transfer $10,000 from account 231-5120, ambulance wages, to account number 231-5850, ambulance additional equipment to cover equipment that was used but not reimbursable.
Second.
Further discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Benoit?
Benoit, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Nichols? Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
And Resity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, uh, next on the agenda is the fire chief's vacation request. So in your packet, you have a letter. Um, this is something that we as a board would have to approve, as you know, the fire chief is a director of board, the board of selectmen. Um, this is, uh, to request a buyout of, uh, vacation, uh, time that the chief has accrued and not been able to use, uh, this year primarily due to his work with the clinic and with the pandemic. This is not something that we usually do. Uh, this is something where last year we had a little bit of confusion with rolling the time and spending on staff vacation. Uh, I, I would hope personally that this, uh, is a one-time and not, if we decide to move forward with it and not set precedent, um, simply because it, uh, it's gonna get pricey and we don't have the money in the budgets for the different departments to buy employees out of their vacation. And in a lot of other communities in central mass, uh, if you don't use your vacation, uh, you'll lose it as a municipal employee. But the, just to the, the crux of the letter is that due to the extreme circumstances over the last fourteen, fifteen months, uh, Seth has not been able to use his vacation time that he's contracted to have. And he would like a buyout for it.
Just going through the chair, a quick question. So are these funds already in the budget that is coming out of the wage line, or where do the funds come?
These funds, it's my understanding.
So that's already budgeted in there?
It's my understanding this funding is coming from, uh, existing wages. Is that correct, Seth?
Okay.
That is correct. They're becoming directly out of annual wage count.
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes sense. The, Seth's emergency management and fire department has been kind of all hands-on, non-stop since pandemic started, and um, I know we've been able to compensate other employees with overtime monies and, and, um, emergency response fees out of CARES money and FEMA money, and I don't think we've been able to do that for, for Seth. So I think that this is a way, kind of in good faith, to show that we appreciate all the time and effort and work that has been done to get us as a town through, through the pandemic and, and keep our vaccination rates high and, and everything, so. And I see Ron has his hand up.
Ron, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear here, 'cause I had an extensive conversation with the chairman about this. Now, since a, a number of employees know that, uh, Seth is putting in for this, a number of employees asked me about this, and I made it really, really clear, this is a one-time deal. Uh, Seth is the only employee that would recommend this for, or support this for, because he's spent extensive time, uh, as emergency management director, running the, um, uh, the, uh, Center for COVID, um, in, in, I think it's really important that, yes, we recognize, um, Seth for what the work he's done, uh, but I also wanna make clear that, uh, that he's the one exception for this, because there's a lot of other peoples that would like to do this, and we just don't have money budgeted for this. So, uh, I'm gonna say clearly for the record that this is not intended to be a precedent, uh, and, uh, even for Seth in the future unless there's some extraordinary circumstance for this to occur.
And I think too, it's, it's important to note, because this issue came up last year, and it was also related to COVID. Um, and I know that, that we had certain staff and personnel that were unable to take vacation time because of this, and we want, we are an employer, and we have to treat our employees fairly. And we did, I think, uh, uh, offer some leeway last year. Um, we wanna be flexible, especially when there's extenuating circumstances like this with our employees, when it comes to their time, when it comes to their families, when it comes to vacation. Um, and so we are mindful of that. Uh, it's also, I wanna make note too that, um, the money this account's coming from, it's not as if it were over budgeted. Uh, there were some staffing lapses that were not accounted for, um, when the budget was put together where this money is coming from. Um, so, in reality, uh, I really think it's probably worth spending the money than having Seth take forty weeks of vacation in a row, uh, at the tail end of the pandemic. And that was, it's obviously not forty weeks, but that was a joke, but, um, I just wanna, you know, I know that town employees last year, some of them were not happy with some of the decisions around the COVID vacations. Um, and we really, we wanna make this as fair and equitable for everyone as possible, and that's just what I wanna convey, um, on behalf of the board, if the board is, is fine with that. Do we have any other questions or comments from the board? I'm sorry, I can't see the, the TV. Somebody?
Oh, sorry, Ron.
Ron, your hand is still up?
So just, just one other comment, and they, you know, I appreciate that the board has allowed me, uh, you know, to use my vacation up till the end of July. There's a number of employees that I've allowed that, uh, in the past, they were allowed to carry over vacation time for the whole year, but there are another, other employees I'm allowing to carry over one week until the end of July. Uh, but they have to make a case for it. I mean, encouraging employees that this is not a normal practice, they shouldn't do it, but there are a number, a couple of employees that need to carry it over, um, and it, it's, it's to the COVID event, but some is more direct than others, but it's just a few people that I will be allowing that for.
Thank you, Ron.
I, I mean, I appreciate that, just kind of having the conversation with Ron, and if it needs to come to us, to come to us, and just know that we are willing to have those discussions, but kind of, as far as the big payouts, we need to.
The thing is, it's, we can't. I mean, the, the budgets for these departments are so tight, um, that it's, this is a rare circumstance where we have the ability to do it, but in a lot of years, Seth, this might not be a reality that we'd be able to do this, um.
But hopefully we're not gonna have another pandemic that is gonna require.
If we do, I'm just moving some. I'm just gonna drive off into the wilderness. Um, but this, yeah, it's obviously been a difficult year, um. So, Ron, that was well said, and obviously, Ron, it's, it's up to his discretion. I think he's, I've seen those requests, and he's done a good job in, in handling, um, the personnel management of that, um, and, and making concessions for folks that have have really seen a, uh, strenuous fifteen months, uh, to say the least. So, uh, does any of the questions from the board? Um, if not, uh, we can entertain a motion to approve the chief's request.
I'll make a motion that we approve, um, Chief Knight's request for his vacation buyout.
Second.
Any further discussion from the board? Hearing then we'll have a roll call vote. Benoit.
Benoit, aye.
Whitman.
Whitman, aye, with much appreciation for all the time and, and energy and everything.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
And Resity, aye. Uh, motion carries unanimous. Uh, thank you, chief.
Thank you, everyone.
Gotta take some time off at some point.
I'm, I'm taking the whole first week of, uh, July fourth off.
All right, perfect. Okay, uh, next on the agenda, uh, is the food truck festival. So we have for discussion, um, in your packet, uh, we have an agreement that's been kind of, uh, conceptualized here for the food truck festival. This is something that I think started, what, two years ago? Is this, will this be our third? Well, I mean, prior to pandemic, uh, we, we ran this for.
Only one.
One year? Time, uh, only one year. Um, Ron, this is something your office has been involved in working on?
Yeah, it absolutely has been, and, you know, I listened to, uh, selectmen at past meetings who thought this was kind of a fun event and a good event. You know, obviously with finances, we made some changes. In the past, uh, the towns provided, um, well, we, we are still gonna provide for dumpster, but for, uh, porta potties and things, uh, we've asked the company that they're gonna have to do that. We just don't have the funds. Also, if we have a police detail, uh, the fire department, I guess in the past, had a, a bear, uh, like a bear vendor, uh, and they attract people to it, so if they do that, they're gonna pay for the private duty part of it. Uh, the major concern that I've made really, really clear to the vendor here is we wanna protect the field. My understanding, they'll be parking the trucks on the outskirts of the field so we don't damage the field. We're gonna be right in, in, um, baseball and the territory during that timeframe. Uh, he's assured me that they'll go to great lengths to make sure that the field is, is taken care of. It looks like the trucks will be on the outside, and on the inside, they have sort of a, a vendor's craft there in the middle of it. Uh, this is really not a fundraiser unto itself. I don't expect that this is gonna really make any money on its own, but I think that organizations like the Fourth of July Committee, kind of the three-hundredth anniversary committee, can do things like set up tables and and sell things. So in that respect, I think it could be a fun, a good fundraiser for those, but, um, I think, uh, this is really a benefit to the people of the town who seem to enjoy this, and that's why I'm recommending we move forward with it.
Yeah, I think this is, uh, something that the town needs, um, you know, particularly given the, the year we've just had and endured. I've heard a lot of anticipation about this event, so, um, I don't think that we need to, at this point, make any motions. It was just here for discussion.
I, I just have a question to the chair. So, so who is like the main coordinator and who's responsible, uh, for this event? You know, typically it's like the fire brigade or some other group, so who, who's actually the person?
The first year we did this, uh, Mike Nicholson really took this by the horns and helped coordinate it through the TA.
So will Ron be the coordinator?
I, I get the impression that Ron's gonna be helping to coordinate the logistics through his office, and Ron, is that the case?
Yeah, that is the case. David George has been working with me on this, so it'll be me and David working on this one, but the health department will have to do inspections of all the food trucks and stuff. So it's gonna be a group effort, but yeah, it's a lot of the work and coordination stuff is gonna come out of, um, my department, and I expect to be there to make sure the trucks are parked the, the way I want them to be, and so the answer, uh, is clearly I'll be deeply involved in this event.
Can you please just, um, and I'll, I see your hand up, Carol. Uh, my only thought would be, uh, to loop Jonathan Miller in. Um, I believe he's still the president of Rutland Baseball Softball, uh, just to make sure that he's aware of what's going on, if he has any recommendations about the field. Um, and obviously, Mr. Buckley, uh, as well. Uh, and Carol, you had your hand up?
Um, I have a couple of questions, um, about the beer vendors and all that. Do we need to be having people being tip certified to, to do this?
So the, the food, they have to be food safe service certified for the trucks. I'm not sure about the bear vendor. They have to get a one-day liquor permit?
I think the answer is yes.
Usually what they do is they're somebody who's already in that business to provide the alcohol, uh, and then it's served by members of the fire department. That's typically the way it goes. I'm not aware of anything special other than the one-day liquor permit, but I'll double check to make sure that's okay.
Yeah, I would like you to do that. Um, the other thing is, how are we going to designate over twenty-one? I know other places have wristbands or stamps or something.
I would recommend that they card an individual, anyone who comes up to the bear stand would need to be required to show a license. That's what, that's the way I, what I would recommend.
Yeah, the, the beer tents that have run in the past, that, for example, just that K-9 Foundation run a few weeks ago. They didn't do wristbands, they, they carded everybody, regardless of whether they had been to the tent before or not, everyone got carded. Um, I do believe, and I could be wrong on this, but, uh, and if not, we should, um, as part of the, the issuance of a liquor license or a liquor permit, um, some of that information, Carol, will be included as background as part of that, that permitting process. Um, but that's certainly something that, that we can have Ron clear up. I think that's a good idea.
I think in the past, if, a, a couple things if I may, or, do you have more, Carol?
Nope, just those two.
Okay, I had a couple, um, things. Can we also loop in Rutland, um, use soccer as well, because if it's in the fall, soccer and baseball both will be used in those fields, um, as what, and.
Yeah, September, that's a good point.
And, um, I think in the past, the way the food truck has, festival has run is it was individual, so you went up to each truck or station and bought whatever you wanted versus selling tickets to go to the whole thing. So I know sometimes in the past, I think the Chilean Chowder Fest, you had to buy a ticket so then you got so many samples or whatever. Um, but this was more like an individual, you could kind of pick and choose, and you paid individually every place that you went. So I think some of that is the way I, I, I envision it running, so, but those are good questions for sure.
So just to be clear on a couple of points here, uh, before we, we need to do this, I reached out to Joe Buckley, who reached out to the soccer league. I'm not sure that he reached out to the baseball league, 'cause I was told that the soccer from, between the soccer league is one who mostly uses that field on, on Saturday, so uh, Joe Buckley already did that, reached out to them and let them know. Uh, I don't think that they loved it, but they didn't, they didn't fight hard about it in that respect either. Uh, so they have been notified, and I'll double check on the baseball part of it. Uh, but it was, uh, my understanding was, uh, that soccer is a major player. We also reached out to Karina to talk about it with the recreation department, and the only really concern she had was she doesn't want anybody to damage the field. That's why I'm, I'm gonna be working aggressively to make sure that the field protected, 'cause that was Karina's real one concern.
Any further questions? I think this is great. Um, town really needs it, so. All right, so thank you, um, Ron, for the update on that.
And thanks to you and Dave for working on this and getting it all going. Thank you.
Hey, we're always looking for volunteers, so anybody who wants to help out with us, I mean, I think it's a great event, and anybody that's a volunteer in the board would love to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll volunteer for the dunk tank.
I'm dunk tank, yeah.
I mean, raise a lot of money that way. It'd be a thousand people that'll line up, uh, you know, it'd be great.
We can all take turns.
Oh, yeah, I'll take turns, so it's gonna be great.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Pay for three more police positions. All right, I appreciate the vote of confidence there, board. I see you smirking over there, Lyndon.
How can you see that? I have a mask on.
It's in your eyes, you know, it's, okay.
Squirt on your poker face.
So next we ha, we have to sign the special town election warrant. Uh, does anybody have any questions about that? I see Anita on here as well. Thank you, Anita, for joining.
Is that, it's not in our packet though, right?
It is, uh, here. In this packet, so we have the post-agreement cultivation. We do not have it here. Um, we don't have a copy of the election warrant. Yes, we do. Here it is. Separate folder. Okay, so, um, usual and feel override, does the board just wanna take a look at it before we sign off on it?
I'd like to.
Yep, there you go.
Thanks.
Okay, so while we do that, um, real quick, we have, uh, as one of the final items, a postage fees discussion. Uh, Ron, is this something you can clarify? Uh, I think this is something that, that you or Beth might have added for discussion.
Is that on the sign? 'Cause I don't have it on my agenda. Did, is that a last-minute thing that Beth did with you? Is this regarding to sign at the post office? What, what's the issue?
Postage, postage fees.
Yeah, I gotta be honest with you, it's not on my agenda, and I'm not aware of it, so.
All right, so we'll just move it, um, and we'll get some clarification on that. Uh, oh, sorry.
Do you have the, there is the request for appropriations is in our packet one forty-nine.
Right.
Um, is the.
And it has the expenditure report and a copy of the statement from the post office, and it was signed off by Becky and Dan.
Okay, so it's a, apologies, it's a transfer for, a proposed transfer for four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents from postage supplies, uh, to the line item posted, postage purchased services. And it's for leave pay, uh, lease payment, um, for bulk shipping cost through USPS.
And a, and a rate increase or permit increase?
Yeah.
That's another transfer, so, some confusion there. Uh, so if there's no further discussion on this item, um, because it's something we have to pay, uh, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to transfer four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents from account zero, zero, one, dash one, five, nine, dash five, four, zero, zero, dash zero, 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 postage supplies to account zero, 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 dash one, five, nine, dash five, two, zero, zero, dash zero, 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 postage purchased services.
Second.
Yeah, is that a motion or?
Like, say so moved and then second, yeah.
Okay, third.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? I just wanna get a look. Any further discussion? Uh, hearing then we'll have a roll call vote. Benoit.
Benoit, aye.
Uh, Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
Nichols.
Nichols, aye.
And Resity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. And coming back to, uh, the sign, uh, to the special election town warrant, everyone's had a chance to review it. We all comfortable with it reflecting what we had discussed?
Through the chair, I just have a question as far as the, um, costs, like how it's, where the funds are coming to pay for the election.
Uh, Anita, uh, there's a question regarding the funds to pay for the election.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I wanted to, to ask. Um, I, I did put the time for the auction from seven AM to eight PM because, uh, we pretty much settled on, on that, on that regular time span for all, all municipal auctions. But there, but I didn't know if your board wanted to, at another time, maybe, um, Saturday before, uh, discuss whether you wanted to shorten the time. I, I can request a interdepartmental transfer, uh, from one of my accounts to, uh, election purch, purchased services, and that should cover the cost of, of, um, of programming, the memory cards for the tabulators, and also, uh, for the handicap machine and printing the ballots. But there's nothing in, um, our election budget. But there's nothing in our election budget for payroll for elections. So I think unless we could come up with something really creative, I think we may be looking at a reserve fund transfer. So I didn't know if it might be prudent to talk about reducing the hours. I know that we run into all kinds of questions about, you know, not providing the voters, you know, adequate time to get to the polls, so.
Through the chair, yeah, that, that would be my concern is that, you know, people thinking we're trying to pull a fast one to do an override or not do an override.
Exactly.
It's a very sensitive situation, so.
They already think that because we just have all that fill-
No, I know, but, but I mean, to specifically change, all of a sudden change hours when we have never done that on other ones. I, I just have a concern, the perception that people may have.
I also think it's important-
I agree.
To, to Lyndon's point, I mean, this is ostensibly, we're asking people to raise their own taxes. And to shorten the window, I think would, it wouldn't just create the appearance of, of that. It would just be unfair as a practice. So I, I would prefer not engaging in that conversation about shorting the hours. I know it's tough. I knew your staff and you, they work really hard. But it's just such an important issue that I feel like we need to have those regular hours observed.
No, and, and, and I, I basically agree. I just wanted to put it out there because of, of lack of funding. We can only do so much to, to cut the, you know, the election payroll. And we'll try to schedule as, as efficiently as we can, but, but we still need to talk about where that, that's going to be funded from.
Did, through the chair, do, do you have a figure, Anita, what, what the cost is going, what is probably typical as on the other one, right?
Yeah. Um, it's a little less for, it's a little less for the purchase services because it's a short ballot. And, but it's, and, and, and just printing the ballots. But for, for payroll, it could run almost $3,000. So, you know, I should be able to get it. Hopefully I could, you know, get it down some within the same hours. But we're, you know, MGL requires us to have a certain number of people at the, you know, workers at the polls. So I don't know if we could turn it to two. I think that would be really hard, but 2,000, but.
Okay.
This is the part it knows. We originally were hoping to use COVID money for this. But the timeline does not work for COVID money. We'd have to spend the funds before the election and that wouldn't work. So COVID money is not a use we can do this with.
So through, so through the chair, Ron, is there any cost that were covered by COVID that we may be able to pull out of an account or transfer?
Not, oh, you mean they replaced existing funds? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, if there's an expense that was paid with COVID money that we had budgeted for, I mean, is there funds in that, in that account that we could transfer?
So off the top of my head, I, I don't think so because we obviously, the budget that we needed for COVID was quite differently, different than budget money we put in. So I don't think so because even like in the salary lines, we pay, you know, it would be over and above. So I, I, I don't think there's anything like that. I, I can look and see, but, but I don't believe there would be anything like that.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll have to have that discussion, but we have to sign the, the warrant.
And just for public, it's, um, can, I don't have it, can we just read the date and the times? It's Monday?
Yes. Um, the, uh, it'll be on Monday, the 28th day of June. From seven o'clock to eight o'clock in the evening, I'm sorry, seven o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock in the evening. Want to make it sure we're not.
That'd really cut it short. Definitely have a problem there.
And again, the, the question, just to make it very clear, is regarding an override. Shall the town of Rutland be allowed to assess an additional $300,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of funding the assessment of the Waukesha Regional School District and the assessment of Bay Path Regional Vocational Technical High School for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021? Um, again, we, we made extensive comments and discussion on that at the last meeting. So I would encourage anyone to go back and watch that on YouTube. It's riveting stuff.
Just, just for, through the chair for clarification, Mr. Canacchioli was in here earlier, Ron, concerned about the increases for the secretary's wages.
The non-union.
The non-union wages. Um, and he said it was tied to the override. So it's not specifically tied to the override. It's just anticipated if we have a shortfall, it's going to have to be balanced. Is that true? Because it, it's not, it is not, it is not tied to the override specifically.
Well, the, the issue is there's about 220,000 or so cuts that are there. If the override doesn't pass, then in fact, we're going to have to make those cuts. And one of those cuts, the finance committee is recommending is putting, um, the salary increases, the 2% wage decrease for all those people that are non-union or non-contractual. So if the override doesn't pass, then, then in fact, those raises won't occur. As you know, and I think the board knows, I've been arguing against that point of view for some time. The question, the important question to do what he wants, and I was trying to suggest him, is, is if you're not going to cut that, what else are you going to cut? Because it's going to have to be some other-
Well, and that's, I, I think that's, I understand Mr. Canacchioli's point. And I think it would be inappropriate, it's public comment to, to respond because FinCom is not here.
Right.
FinCom's worked very hard to come up with what they feel, excuse me, is, is a budget that puts us in, I mean, obviously our financial situation is what it is, but given our financial situation puts us in the, the best path forward. I don't know, given listening to all those FinCom meetings and looking at that budget, where you would find an additional, and I don't think Mr. Canacchioli's number is correct.
Right.
I think it was far exceeding that amount. I don't know where you would find that extra money to cut from the budget.
And, and I, I understand that, but I just wanted to clarify that it is not part of the override specifically. And that can be addressed in the budget and the finance committee is, is addressing that. Because in, in his statement, he was saying it was tied to the override, but it's not specifically. So I want to make sure that that's clear to everybody, that we're not putting that out there on the override. It, it's actually part of the actual budget outside of that specific override. So I just wanted clarification.
So Lyndon is correct, but I also want to make another comment. I want to be clear that while the budget I presented, originally at FinCom, I presented a budget that gave the raises to all the non-union people as well. I, there's no way I could say anything negative about finance, uh, FinCom's recommendation. And frankly, I support it. It's fact that I don't like it. I didn't recommend it. I support it because in order to give those raises, it means other cuts everywhere. And we're cutting some pretty serious lines with police overtime and things. So it's a real judgment call and, and it's a difficult question for FinCom and me as to what cut would replace that. So I explained to the gentleman, I'd be happy to hear other suggestions for where we can cut that might make up for those funds. But it's, it's, it's not an easy decision.
And through the chair, just for clarification, that, that, there's already cuts, even with the override, there's still going to be cuts to departments. So I think people need to understand that the department's already been cut. This isn't going to make them whole necessarily, even with the override.
So if I could comment to that, and, and you're right, you're correct. In terms of the budget that was, that was brought forward to me by individual department ads, before it even went to the finance committee, I made significant cuts to that budget before it even went to finance. Because we knew that there was a deficit situation. So this goes to a question that Karen talks a, a lot about, the chairman of the finance committee. This is a level funded budget that I brought forward to the finance committee, not a level services budget. In other words, we didn't even, the budget I brought to FinCom didn't even provide level services because it was less than what it cost to keep things going forward. So Lyndon is absolutely correct that it, this, even with the override, we're not getting to what's called a level services budget.
And if I may, just kind of on the same vein, the, even if we pass the school budget contingent on the override, which would essentially fail it if the override fails, if Rutland fails the school budget, but all four other towns pass it, Rutland is still on the hook for paying. So just, so even if Rutland fails the school budget, the other four towns pass it, there is that, that real possibility that those cuts would have to be realized. So I think Paxton's town meeting is the end of June. Um, I know Holden passed the school budget. Um, and I think Princeton passed the school budget. I think Sterling's town meeting is after hours. And I think Paxton is towards the very end of June. So just for the public to know that there's a lot of moving pieces and it's not solely contingent on what we as a town do.
Yeah, and I, I think we've made it very clear as a board, I mean, all of us have different opinions. We've made those opinions clear about whether or not we support an override which constitutes raising taxes. But what we've, we've done through the override is provide the voters in town the chance to form their own opinions. FinCom and Ron and this board have been very proactive in trying to get as much information out to the voters as possible. And so we've just tried to give the town as many options as we could to be able to make those budgetary decisions. So. Okay. Um, any further discussion about the warrant? I, I think we have a motion. Do we have a motion in a second to sign it?
I don't think so. I'll make a motion that we sign the warrant for the, um, June, June 28th special election.
In a second.
Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Vote Benoit.
Benoit, aye.
Uh, Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
And Resiti, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Um, that's the end of our regular agenda. What I did want to do, as some of you know, this has been a tremendously difficult year for the town over the last, well, 15 months, so almost a year and a half, we're getting there. The town has been hit hard by COVID in, in terms of our personnel. Uh, we did have Officer Sanji who, who passed last year about a year ago on this past weekend. And unfortunately, the town family did have another passing from COVID this last week with Mr. Bill Cannon. Was a longtime conservation commission member. I did want to have a moment of silence for him. So we'll go ahead and do that now, please. Thank you. Um, and I, I see some of his family on the meeting tonight. Um, I had talked to his, his wife earlier today briefly. Um, they're going through quite a bit. But I think we had had some discussions internally, have to bring to the board's attention. I'd like to put it on the next agenda. Similar to the ceremony we had for Officer Sanji with the bench. Given Mr. Cannon's passion for conservation, maybe planting a tree in his honor when the time is more appropriate, reached out and Bonnie Bessie was gracious enough to donate a tree for that ceremony and some signage perhaps. And we can schedule that when the family would like and, and is appropriate. Um, I think it's important. We honor folks in town that, that do volunteer and give their time and, and serve their community. So certainly hearts go out to Cannon family. Thank you. Uh, that is the end of tonight's agenda.
David?
Uh, go ahead, uh, Ron.
I apologize for, for being a little late. As you know, had some family matters I had to deal with. Prior to me, could you just tell me if the host agreement for the cultivation was approved?
Yes.
Hey, can I just make a couple of comments regarding that? And not so much about the agreement, but how this is moving forward so the board is aware of what's going on? So just to let the board know, Master Holden did come and we obviously negotiated, went through the whole entire RFI process and we negotiated this agreement. I'm very happy this is a great agreement. This company has now asked me to put on another RFI for manufacturing because they're interested in doing manufacturing and cultivation all in kind of one step at one location. Uh, it is a separate host agreement, so there has to be a separate RFI on, on that issue as well. So I plan on doing that. I do want to let you know that that makes things a little complicated in the hosting agreement because the way the bylaw was originally established, it said there can only be one license on a single parcel.
Yeah. We, we had this conversation, Ron, earlier.
Okay. Then if you already brought that forward, I'm good. I don't need to move, discuss that any further. I just wanted to make people aware because I wasn't sure that all the board members were aware of that. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any further questions or comments on the board?
So I just-
Yep.
In response to that, sorry, um, that would, it still would be an RFI that's open, but as far as the physical location would either be dependent on a zoning bylaw change or a, a separate location to avoid the zoning bylaw concern. Is that-
That's correct.
To that question, Leah, Ron, and maybe this is more a question for, for Norm. Could we get around it through a variance or would we have to have an actual bylaw change in order for that project to occur?
Just let's first make it clear, the RFI is open to the public, so anyone can apply. Just because they've asked me to do an RFI doesn't mean that they're going to get the award of the, of the host agreement. So nothing guarantees them that they would even get it. But let's assume for a minute they did. The bylaw is very clear, the way it's written. So in my opinion, no, it's not a variance issue because it, it has to meet these, these standards set out in the bylaw. So it would require a bylaw change. It's possible that it could be done at this town meeting based upon, there is, the issue is on the table as a citizen petition. So the issue can be debated and discussed in that bylaw. Essentially, it could be changed at town meeting. If, if parties agreed it, that's a good change to make to that citizen petition. But no, I don't believe in any way a variance would solve this problem. If it can't be nailed at this town meeting, the bylaw would have to be brought up for the fall and the adjustment would have to be made in the fall.
Thank you, Ron. Does that answer it?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Uh, we'll have a roll call vote. There's no further comments. Benoit?
Benoit, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
And Resiti, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Uh, thank you, everyone. And, uh, Ron, I know you're dealing with a lot. So whatever the board can do to support you, let us know.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.